Board members, don't forget to enter the meeting on your microphone. The regular meeting of the Iberia Parish School Boardroom to be held at 5:30 PM on Wednesday, April 9th, 2025, in the Iberia Parish School Boardroom at the Administrative Building located at 1500 Jane Street, New Iberia, Louisiana. That the Iberia Parish School Board Meeting be called to order at 5:30 PM. Roll call, Ms. Gwynn.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Toop.
Here.
Ms. Segura.
Here.
Ms. McNeil.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Ms. Dabwa.
Ms. Mayu.
Here.
Ms. Dugah.
Here.
Ms. Sharpenche.
Here.
Ms. Roseman.
Here.
Ms. President, we have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Gwynn. We're gonna have a moment of silence for Ms. Betty Jean Romero Poirier, retired school cafeteria manager, more than 35 years of service, Mr. William Bill Russell, retired bus driver, more than 30 years of service, brother of retired assistant superintendent James Russell Jr., and Uncle James Russell III, child welfare and attendance supervisor, and Mr. Gregory Lee, a Laurville Elementary student, son of Ms. Latasha Lee, paraprofessional at Genere High, and grandchild of Ms. Polk, the cafeteria manager at Iberia Merrill, followed by the prayer by Ms. McNeil and the pledge by Mr. LeBlanc. Please stand for a moment of silence. Amen. Ms. LeBlanc.
Face the flag and recite with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. McNeil and Mr. LeBlanc. Public comment instructions. The requirement regarding public comment for school board meetings is that a call for public comment must take place prior to each agenda item and vote on by the board. If you wish to comment on an agenda item during this meeting, please proceed as follows. Please fill out a card with your first and last name, agenda item you wish to address. These requests to address the board regarding an agenda item will be heard prior to each agenda item. Any cards to be turned in? Hearing none. Moving on to presentations, recognitions, and reports. B1, recognition of New Iberia Senior High Student for making a perfect score on the ACT. Mr. Hulain.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the board. Tonight is my privilege to introduce to you one of our outstanding students here in Iberia Parish School System, a junior at New Iberia Senior High School, Ms. Patria Liam Kyo. Since she was young, she has always enjoyed learning, and with the support of her family and friends, Patria has worked hard in order to excel. Patria is part of the gifted and talented program, and she's an active member in multiple clubs such as VEDA, National Honor Society, and Student Government. Patria says she's passionate about art and music, both of which have heavily influenced her life. Additionally, she practices in Nisha's Band and tennis team. She participates in Nisha's Band and tennis team. Despite her lively schedule, she continues to strive for academic success. Although Patria does not have any concrete plans yet for college, she does wish to attend after high school, and she wants to pursue a degree in engineering. Please help me congratulate Patria Liam Kyo for this outstanding accomplishment of scoring a perfect 36 on the ACT. That means she didn't not miss one question on that entire exam. So congratulations, Patria. We're proud of you, and we're so happy that you are a student in Iberia Parish Schools.
I think Patria's father is here tonight. Would you like to stand? We recognize. And also, thanks to her principal, Mr. Emmanuel Harding, for being here tonight, representing all of his teachers and staff. Definitely, they all played a role in this achievement, and we're very proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hulain, and congratulations. Moving on to B2, group health plan, financial performance update.
Good afternoon, everyone. Well, I guess you know what it means when I'm up here presenting the update. We just handed out the report to everyone's place, and we'd like to give it out further ahead of time, but understand, you know, we're coming each month, and to give you the most current data, like, we just received March's data just two days ago. So we're trying to, when we attend the meetings, we try to give you the most updated information available. So we would like to have it in your packet earlier, but, you know, doing these monthly updates prevents us from doing that. Well, March has, unfortunately, is the worst month we've had since we've gone self-funded. You could see with $1,063,000 of planned funding, $119,000 in stop-loss and administrative costs, medical claims for the month were over $934,000, integrated RX was just under $65,000. I'm estimating prescription drug claims to be $390,000. We don't have that data yet for March, which I'm projecting total claims, total claims cost of $1,389,000. Total planned costs, once you add those fixed costs into it, is $1.5 million. I'm projecting that our rebate, prescription drug rebate, will be around $146,000, and I'm not anticipating any stop-loss recovery for March. So the bottom line is that we had a deficit in the month of March of nearly $300,000, which brings our reserves down to $7.7 million. So it's not the kind of trend we want to see, but in these cases, we've had the occurrence of some very serious claims that, you know, are inevitable, and so we'll continue to monitor it. We do expect to get a credit of $50,000 because Blue Cross has been processing the emergency room visits incorrectly. If you remember, we made a change to where we added $100 surcharge for anyone going to the emergency room, receiving services, and not being admitted. That was in, that's in addition to your deductible and coinsurance. Blue Cross has an error in processing it as if it was $100 copay. So we anticipate about $50,000 of a credit to claims. So we'll continue to monitor it and keep the board updated, and we hope that at some point, things stabilize. Now, it does look like prescription drugs stabilized somewhat. We're not seeing the continued increases, and that Save On Program that addresses the specialty drug costs, we've analyzed that, and it is saving the group money. It is saving us money, so that is working. So that concludes my report. I'll open it up to questions if anyone has questions.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Any questions for Mr. Perez? Hearing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a good evening.
Moving on to the consent agenda items. Does any board member wish to remove it for discussion? Hearing none. C1, approved minutes of the regular meeting of the Iberia Parish School Boardroom, March 26, 2025. Public comment? Hearing none. Motion? Moved by Ms. Segura, seconded by Ms. Roseman. Board discussion, questions? Hearing none. Please vote. Ms. Gwynn, that motion passes. Moving on to agenda item D1, consider recommendation to award bid number 1163, purchase of cafeteria serving line equipment for Park Elementary, Kaneview Elementary, and Jefferson Island Elementary, and take appropriate action. Mr. Delahoussen.
Thank you, Mr. President. For bid number 1163, the purchase of cafeteria serving line equipment, we received two bids. We recommend going with the low bidder, who met all specifications, associated food equipment and supplies of Alexandria, Louisiana, at a total cost of $245,469, which came in well under budget.
Thank you, Mr. Delahoussen. Public comment? Hearing none. Motion? Moved by Ms. Sharpenche, seconded by Ms. McNeil. Questions for Mr. Delahoussen? Hearing none. Please vote. Ms. Gwynn, that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Delahoussen. Moving on to agenda item D2, consider recommendation to advertise for bid number 1157, Iberia Parish Career Center Expansion, and take appropriate action. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, sir. Maintenance Department requests approval of the recommendation to advertise bid 1157, Iberia Parish Career Center Expansion. This bid is gonna be out for a little longer as we're working the schedule that we have for board meetings. So we will open this on the May 21st meeting, which is our only meeting in May, so it'll be out for advertisement a little bit longer. We didn't want to try to push this, and we've got a lot of specialty equipment in this project, one of which is that we're gonna have to let the foundation sit for about six months. So besides foundation construction, we won't have any physical building construction until January of next year, very similar to what we did at Laurville Elementary and Bell Place Elementary. So we recommend your favorable approval. We have the plans and specs here if you wish to take a look at them, and we'll put this out on advertisement tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Public comment? Hearing none. Motion? Moved by Dana Dugah, seconded by Mr. LeBlanc. Questions for Mr. Lopez? Hearing none. Please vote. Ms. Gwynn, that motion passes. Moving on to agenda item D3, consider recommendation to advertise for bid number 1164, Stronger Connections Security Fencing at Laurville High and Delcum High, and take appropriate action. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, sir. Again, we recommend to advertise bid 1169, Stronger Connections Security Fencing at Laurville High and Delcum High. This will be also published tomorrow in the, as necessary, it will be advertised as necessary. All the paperwork will be sent in tomorrow. Stronger Connections is a grant that kind of popped out after ESRS, and it is specifically to harden your exterior of the school, whether it be with new doors, or new locks, or new fencing, any type of thing of this nature. So we had one campus that is totally not fenced in, and that's the Laurville High Campus. We did it as pleasantly as possible. We basically went building to building. We didn't put a fence around the sidewalk, or fence around the oak trees, or anything of that nature, so the front yard's still open. So this is fences going from building to building, along the front, along the side, and the back's already fenced in. In fact, there's multiple fences in the back. Delcum, we had a couple areas where you could get in that were not fenced when the gate was open to the parking lot, so we closed that in also. This is 100% being funded by Stronger Funds, and we recommend your favorable approval.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Public comment? Hearing none. Motion? Moved by Ms. Toop, seconded by Mr. Segura. Questions for Mr. Lopez? Mr. Dugah.
The building closest to Ed Bruce R. It won't be, that'd be in front of the old gym.
Okay.
Those doors would still be open into the yard?
Outside.
Wouldn't be fenced in?
So from the old gym to the industrial arts, there'll be a fence that comes out, and you get to the drive, and it's coming out the corner of the old gym building. Then you're gonna get to the drive, which is gonna have an electrified gate, can of lever that slides. Then you're gonna have a sharp piece of fence, and then you're gonna have a sidewalk gate right there, and then that is gonna tie into the industrial arts building with fencing into the corner of that.
Very good.
And it's gonna rely on doors being locked. And if the doors are locked, there's no way to get in besides climb over the fence.
Good, Mr. Dugah.
Very good.
And I might note, the walk gates that we're putting in all have to have panic hardware on them because of fire marshal, so they have to be able to leave the property because the fences are so close to the buildings. So you'll see something that was seen at Ace Bank Street years ago, where you have a keypad entrance number, and then we can go a whole bunch of codes. I think it was 1,000, I was told. You can have individualized or group codes, et cetera, but you have a code to get in, you won't be able to trip the panic device. There's protection against that. You have a closure arm that's gonna close the gate behind you, lock it back in, but you do have a panic device to hit and exit.
So there's not gonna be a fence in the front of Laurville Elementary?
There'll be a fence from the, what do we call the old gym classrooms, the old business section?
Yeah.
The corner of that to the corner of the main. There'll be two gates because there's two means of egress. Then the corner of the main to the corner of the home. And there'll be a means of egress because that's the covered walk that goes to the new gym. And then you come back around, there's two indentions between the buildings where air conditioning units are. There'll be fencing and walk gates right there to allow the technicians to get back. Then you're closed in at that point. Then we're gonna come from the junior high O section across to the junior high new section, and there'll be a walk gate there, and then your parking lot is open to Myrna Ryan Drive.
You gotta figure it out. Any questions for Mr. Lopez? Hearing? Mr. LeBlanc?
You may have touched on it, and I missed it, the gym.
Across the street.
Across the street. The gym is the gym. There's doors on it, and they need to keep them locked. This policy sells.
That work. Thank you.
Mr. Dugah.
The new gym. There's silent entrances. They boarded up.
Yes.
Because they're leaking?
No. Experiment. We were getting some slippage on the floors being reported, and they asked me to close that up, and as you know, a set of exterior doors is not really something you want to just put up for an experiment. About $25,000, $30,000 for what we use. So we put some Visqueen, and we wouldn't it off, and we left it the whole winter, and it seems to have improved. So it seems those alcoves are keeping moisture and transferring moisture in, and we're gonna be looking at possibly closing them up with some metal doors, which is gonna be a little bit less expensive. And they're very seldom used, but they're two large indentions right there. There's also some broken concrete right there, so we could get some horizontal transfer of moisture coming in from that location because of the overhanging trees that they have on that property. So it looks like it worked out.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Lopez? Hearing none. Please vote. That motion passes. Moving on to agenda item D4, consider recommendations to advertise for bid number 1165, Stronger Connections Video Entry Devices at School Facilities Parishwide, and take appropriate action. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, sir. Again, we ask to have the ability to advertise for bid number 1165, Stronger Connections Video Entry Devices at School Facilities Parishwide. Another name for this is the panic button. So as you know, the panic button was put inside of our bond issue, but again, the opportunity came about to defer some of the costs using federal funds, and that's what we're planning on doing. It's gonna be very similar to what we have at Ace North Street, if you've been to that location, except we're not gonna be using magnets. We're gonna be using a QEL solenoid that goes in the Von Duprin panic devices that we use, which is the new device they put out, which has a smaller inrush amperage requirement. We can run at 1 amps instead of 8 amps. So our power supplies do not have to be as strong. That is interfaced with a camera television-type system outside that allows a viewing monitor inside at the receptionist or secretarial location, and you can buzz in, state your business. Once you gain entrance, then they can hit a button, and they can open the door remotely. That will be accomplished at all of our schools, and at Ace North Street, we're gonna pull the magnets off because Fire Marshal really doesn't like the magnets too much, but it's all Fire Marshal-approved, and we're gonna put a QEL in that system also. Only one of our schools do not have Von Duprin panics, and that's Kaneview, and they have a Corneer device, and we have found the Von Duprin equivalent to the Corneer device, and we'll be installing that. That was because that came right after the changes after Rita Katrina, and most companies hadn't tested their equipment to meet the latching requirements of the new codes.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Public comment? Hearing none. Moved by Ms. Sharpenche, seconded by Ms. Roseman. Questions for Mr. Lopez? I have one question. Is this gonna be going to effect for next school year? What's the timeframe? I mean...
The timeframe is, this has got the ESRS date on it, September 30th, so everything needs to be done and paid for by September 30th. As you notice, we're gonna open them up in a staff meeting and then bring them to you on the 21st so we can meet that timeline, and all bills need to be paid, so we've already figured it out. We're gonna have to give the superintendent authority to make final payment on recommendation for myself and Ms. Tenon, that all paperwork and punch list items are finished. It's gonna be identical to the last batch of ESRS projects as far as timeline. We're trying to get it all done in the summer, and then we gotta pay bills, and we gotta wait 45 days for a lien.
Any other questions for Mr. Lopez? Hearing none. Please vote. Ms. Gwynn, that motion passes. One more, Mr. Lopez. Agenda item D5, consider recommendation to advertise for bid number 1166, Coto Elementary Wastewater Treatment Plant Replacement, and take appropriate action. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, sir. Again, we are asking for permission to advertise for bid number 1166, Coto Elementary Wastewater Treatment Plant in a replacement project. This plant is the last of what some people may know as the Red Fox Plants that existed for a long time. This one's been installed and in use longer than I have been with the school system. We've noticed for the past couple years, the numbers have been creeping up on what we test for, and they're still within the parameters that are allowable, but we don't want them to get out of hand. So this is a proactive measure before the plant, it's old, and it loses its efficiency with age. And we're going to replace this. The big issue we have with this project, it's about three days of work, but it's about 100 days to get a plant. So this is gonna put us into the fall. We've already identified the break, the fall break period as a four-day weekend to possibly get it accomplished, and we also looked at the Thanksgiving holidays, which is when we changed out the Genere Senior High Plant about a decade ago. So this is a proactive measure, so we do not get out of compliance. As we've recognized, we're moving in the wrong direction, and this has to be submitted, and we have to wait for return from the LDH, and until we approve the project, we did not submit to the LDH. One of the other things I want to mention is that three projects prior to that were all submitted to the Fire Marshal and to the applicable local jurisdiction and have passed both with reports to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Public comment? Hearing none. Motion? Moved by Ms. Toops, seconded by Mr. Segura. Questions for Mr. Lopez? Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Lopez, good evening. Will that have a generator?
No, sir. No, sir. None of our sewer plants have generators.
None of them?
No, sir. We have, this is one of five plants that we have. None are in the generator power.
Okay. And I just asked because I know they, in Coto, they bad weather and all that, they have issues with the water, with the pumping, and this, that, and the other, and I just didn't talk in sewer, right?
Yeah, we're talking sewer and extreme measures. We do have an agreement with Sewer District 1. I've seen us in times of very big issues. We get a pump truck and pump it out, and we just reimburse them for the cost of doing that. We have not gotten to that effect typically when we've had these long outages, and it's just, it's the same stretch of 88 that runs all the way down to 182 that's been going out for the last couple years. When we lose power, a lot of times it's a six, eight-hour outage, and we've had to evacuate the school at that time. You know, we feed the lunch, and then we get an early dismissal. So we haven't had people in there for long enough to cause any issue.
Okay. That was my concern, health issue.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Just like I say, bad weather, Coto, no water, no sewage, no this, that, the other. So thank you.
Good, Mr. Lewis.
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any other questions for Mr. Lopez? Hearing none. Please vote. Ms. Gwynn, that motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item D6, consider recommendation to purchase Eureka Math Squared for K through Algebra 1 students' workbooks for the 2025-2026 school year, and take appropriate action. Ms. O'Donnell.
Good evening. I'm not gonna read this entire letter to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This is our year four purchase for our kindergarten-through-algebra-one curriculum for Eureka Math Squared. Again, this is year four. This is the first year it's actually on state contract now, so we, I know that has made Lauren happy. So we, I know that has made Lauren happy. We anticipated shifting this from Essar, because it has been purchased with Essar for the last three years, to general fund, and we did budget for this. Traditionally, it was three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, so I did cut that down by eighty thousand to print some books in-house for students. But this is all of the workbooks that students need in color for the main learning that is happening in the classroom. We are printing the homework books for them. And again, this purchase is two-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. It's about thirty dollars per student. I'm asking for your favorable approval.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. Public comment? Hearing none, motion? Moved by Mr. Dugah. Second by Mr. Lewis. Questions for Ms. O'Donnell? Mr. Dugah?
So we are teaching algebra to kindergartens?
Maybe we could. But we, it's kindergarten through Algebra One, including math essentials. I don't know what happens when they change the standards.
The state doesn't either. Any other questions for Ms. O'Donnell? Hearing none, please vote. Ms. Gwen? That motion passes. Moving on to agenda item D seven. amend the Iberia Parish School Board zero-six dash twenty-twenty-five as requested by Louisiana Attorney General to be designated as Iberia Parish School Board zero-six A dash twenty-twenty-five, and take appropriate action. Mr. Landry?
Yes, sir, thank you. At your last meeting, y'all voted on a resolution to requesting permission from the Attorney General in accordance to state law to engage the services of, on a contingency basis, of some antitrust lawyers to engage in a pending lawsuit in Missouri, which involves a allegedly price fixing scheme, which could help with your pharmaceutical prices that are going on in your self-insured program. At the time, it was explained to us, time was sort of of the essence. And that is because so far, there was no group involved representing public bodies. And so by getting the pitch that was given to y'all by the attorneys was that if we could get them engaged in a contract to do that on your behalf, that would put them in the driver's seat for a particular group. The group would have to be, of course, approved by the federal judge there. The federal judge separates the different groups. And of course, their effort, their desire was to be the first to get that filed, that petition amended. And I sent all of you a copy of that pending lawsuit, which is about seventy pages long. And somewhere around page twenty-six, it explains basically what these lawyers would do on our behalf. That resolution you adopted was sent to the Attorney General. The Attorney General, at this stage now, we have passed the first two levels of approval that needs to be done before it's sent to the Attorney General's desk. However, they are requesting that we amend the resolution and the contract that y'all sent to the Attorney General from the last meeting. And I colored-coded the amendments that the Attorney General is asking that be placed in the resolution as well as the contract. So obviously, the message that I clearly understand from the Attorney General is that if the board approves these resolutions, then we're more than two-thirds away of getting approval. And I think if the board does not approve the amendments, we're back to square one. And I don't think we have any approval so far. So in compliance with the Attorney General's request, I have, I'm asking that the resolution be amended and be designated as oh-six-twenty-three A, as in apple, twenty-five. And if the board approves that tonight, of course, we'll send it to the Attorney General. They already have what they sent me, they know what they're looking for. So it's up to the board to approve the amendments that they would like to see the board put in the resolution and the contract. And I also have a motion that they also would like to see the way the motion reads. And if the board decides to amend the motion, I would ask the chair to give me the privilege of reading the motion in the record on behalf of the mover, whoever makes the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Landry.
I'll answer any questions.
Public comment? Hearing none. Moved by Mr. McDonald, second by Mr. Lewis. You want me to read the motion, or you have a different one than I have?
Oh, yeah, if you have it, if you don't mind, I'd like for you to read the motion into the record.
It was moved by, it was moved by Jay McDonald, second by Raymond Lewis. The motion to adopt the revisions to the Iberia Parish School Board Resolution zero-six dash twenty-twenty-five and the contract as requested by the Louisiana Attorney General to be designated as zero-six A dash twenty-twenty-five, and to grant the superintendent the authority to make any other revisions that the Louisiana Attorney General might require as to both. Questions for Mr. Landry? Mr. Mayu?
I've got one question and two comments. The one question, the, there are highlighted changes, there are some are green, some are blue. I didn't see a legend. What's the difference between the green and the blue?
Yeah, the green represents language that's already in there, in the resolution and the contract, but it's revised in a minor way. The blue is something that was not in the original motion. I should have put that on there. That's the key. The green is to simply move what's in the resolution to a different place with a minor revision. And the blue, I use the same key that I use for y'all policies. The blue is totally new language that the A G wanted in to both the resolution and the contract.
Thank God, I had two comments. One, I would respectfully agree that from this point forward, changes to these documents that need to be done in an expeditious manner, that we grant the authority to our representative, the superintendent, to deal with those issues in a timely manner. And at the same time, the last comment, and I'll shut her up, is I continue to raise my objection to putting items on our agenda where there's no backup in the agenda package. Now, I understand sometimes there are emergencies and sometimes you just can't get to it. I just continue to raise my objection to put anything on the agenda where there's no backup in the packet itself.
Any other questions for Mr. Landry? Hearing none, please vote.
Wow, Ms. Gwen's sleeping.
Please vote. That motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Landry. Moving on to announcements, Mr. Hughlan?
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Next week will be our Easter break. Schools will be closed from Monday, the fourteenth, through Friday, the eighteenth. The offices will be open next week, Monday and Tuesday, but our offices will close for the Easter break beginning on Wednesday. I just would like to remind everyone that we are returning to school on Monday, the twenty-first as a makeup day from the three snow days that we had to use in January. So we will be sending out a reminder to parents. And we'll be welcoming back all of our students the day after Easter with lots of sugar in their system. So it should be a fun day on the Monday after Easter, but we will return on the twenty-first. Also, when we return that week, we will be, we have begun testing in some schools, but the majority, the vast majority of our schools will begin leap testing during that week after Easter and in the week subsequent to that. So we wish all of our students good luck on the leap test and thank all of our teachers for their hard work in preparing students for that day. Ms. Nursey and I did attend the program last night at the Agape Fellowship. The one-hour prayer power for state testing, and it was well-attended. And we thank that group of retired educators for putting that program together every year. Last thing I have is a letter that I did place at your desk that we received today through Dr. Brumley, State Superintendent, from Governor Jeff Landry. And we were asked to share that with all of our employees, so I gave you a copy as well. The big takeaway from this letter is the last paragraph that says, "Regrettably, with the setback faced by the failure of Amendment Two, we are back to the drawing board as no existing alternative recurring resources exist to fund the permanent salary increase you deserve. It's imperative that we work together towards a financial, sound financial budgeting that protects the taxpayer and properly compensates you. As always, my door is open to finding a solution that does both." So this letter was addressed to the teachers. The stipend that we received for the past two years as a stipend was set to become a permanent addition to the salary, but that failed. So it sounds like there is no additional funding elsewhere to support that. We are hoping that some way that they find to be able to issue another stipend again. But we're, it's not looking too good right now, but we're gonna keep our ears open and see what's to come. But I placed a copy of that at your places. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughlan. Any other announcements? Mr. Lewis?
Yes, sir. I would just like to take the time to thank Mr. Hughlan and the staff, the counselors at Lowerville, the teachers, the town of Lowerville, and many, many families for coming together, addressing a very tragic, tragic situation. Our counselors, our staff, you, our staff, and one shape, form of another, were out there and still out there, trying to help bring some understanding for the children and some healing for the children. I found out yesterday, my grandson, little boy, used to come and sleep to their home. But I'm gonna say this, I was glad to be made aware of, because when I spoke to Mr. Hughlan, I know the family, the grandparents, and to know that it was no bullying, nothing to do with bullying at all. Nothing to do with bullying. Just some things were going on. But again, I just would like to thank the superintendent and the staff and all the counselors. And Dana, the people of Lowerville, can't say enough about them. They really turn up and show out when they need to. And I've seen that time and time before, coming out of Lowerville for different situations. But thank y'all, let's keep the family lifted up in prayer. Because I can only imagine what they are going through right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any other announcements? Mr. Mayu?
Mr. President, can we, in light of the letter from our esteemed governor about the teachers' pay raises and constitutional amendments, is that can we encourage the governor to, maybe through our attorney, to write a constitutional amendment that specifically deals just with teachers' pay? It appears that the public of Louisiana voted down this measure, but they didn't vote down just this measure. There was an Easter basket full of all kinds of Easter eggs that had nothing to do with this issue that the public in Louisiana objected to. They objected to the other things in that basket. This part, I don't think they objected to. Now, I would suggest that we encourage the governor, we encourage the legislature to amend the Constitution specifically with regards to teachers' payment, teachers' salary. And keep it clean enough so that it becomes easier for the public of Louisiana to vote yes on it the next time there's a general election on constitutional amendments.
I can't answer that it is coming back. How they word it and how they could break it down depends on the Constitution. I don't know if they could just single one thing out. I could find out for you and let you know. But I know they're definitely working to bring it back.
Well, you know, our help is understand, it's something we can sell. I mean, I had heart, I voted no on three of those four. I had heartburn voting in favor of this just because it had the teachers part, but the other stuff in that basket gave me heartburn that I was not in favor as a citizen of Louisiana of voting for those things in that basket. That this did not sweeten the pot enough evidently for my fellow voters in Louisiana.
Will do, I will find out and get you some answers.
It passed here. Number two passed in Iberia Parish.
It did. Any other announcements? Hearing none, no further business? Mr. LeBlanc moves, and Mr. Segura seconds. Discussion? None, please vote. Ms. Gwen? That motion passes, meeting adjourned at six fifteen.